November sixteenth and it is a hybrid meeting. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Transportation Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, VCAT, and video recordings are being made. The meeting of the Transportation Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while the option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in this specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you are identified, to speak. Request that you please turn on your camera and comments and statements are limited to three minutes. The access number is two, three, four, three, seven, seven, three, four, five, nine, five, and the password is Burlington. So we'll stand up and do the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll do public participation because that's what we do. I see Melissa's on. Is there anybody else? And Melissa's of course the committee here, so. All right, and so I guess we'll go ahead and get started with our really only agenda item. And I'll let, you want to talk about Nicole or do you want?
Sorry, I lost my voice, so.
Oh, Nicole has lost her voice. We don't want to do it, Bob?
So I think it was sort of made a little bit more clear after last Tuesday night when Martha was saying like that. Like she was able to confirm what we've been saying that there's really no like federal or state funds available for electric. So I think that that was like a big part of what was going to be discussed tonight, but if we're not going that way, I think that makes it's going to make this need a lot.
Real fast, yes, totally get it, yep.
So I think.
Yeah, I mean Nicole, it doesn't prevent us from doing it. There's no incentives, but like we could still pilot like one theoretically. And we can use a vendor, like some of the vendors offer it, like if we got a fleet of eighteen per se, we could get one or two electric buses as part of that fleet. Theoretically.
Okay.
So we could ask for an alternative, you know, for electric bus pricing?
I mean, we could. I mean, I just don't think we want to, if it's a lot more money and we're not getting it.
Two and a half times the cost.
It's two and a half times the cost, right, so. I mean, I guess what's the point in putting it in if it's that much more money?
We know it's that much more money?
Yes.
Well, we know the cost of the buses is that much more money, so somehow that's going to be translated to us.
Yeah, I think you save on the fuel, right? Like I think the cost of the, I don't know how it's built into the, if you buy the bus, if you own the fleets, similar to the buildings, right? Like the upfront cost is more, but the long-term, there's one more long-term savings. Again, I don't know how that's built into the way when you lease the buses. I don't know. But I mean, I don't, I know we're not necessarily not exploring bringing buses in-house, but I know there's some like savings over the life of the bus type of thing. We pay less in diesel fuel. But I don't know those costs in term of the lease agreements.
So again, I may be speaking out of line. We're not specifying what the bus's engine is.
Okay.
So I mean, I guess the question would be is that if we wanted to clearly indicate that we wanted one, two, half of our fleet or all of our fleet to be electric, then we would need to specify that.
Okay, I'd love to just get a price on like X number of electric buses. Or we have to say we want one, we want two.
The way that they are going to bid this is going to be like they give us like a price per day per bus and they're going to do that for each of the, like each of the five years, the three years of the contract, whatever terms that we decide. So if we then throw in that one or two of these buses might be, it's going to like, I'm just not sure how we would even compare it because it's not going to be like the cost of the bus. It's whatever they ultimately end up charging us per day.
Yeah, we're asking for a service and then how they provide the service, I guess. Like you said, if we dictate, you know, the color of the bus, the size of the bus, you know, the engine of the bus, then they have to obviously meet those requirements, but we're actually just asking them to transport X number of students. So then they have to come back to us with the price to do that.
Okay, so Nicole, if there were incentives, what would we do in those cases? Like I'm not following the difference between there being incentives and there not being incentives.
Cost.
So maybe Melissa, the question is if there were incentives, how would we be reversed for those incentives? If we went with, I mean, we have to go a hundred percent electric, electric to get the incentives? Or can we, again, like she's saying, say, well, quote us with two electric buses? I mean, I don't know. Like I get what you're saying that it's a kind of a flat day fee based on how many students. And I'm not sure if they know how to tailor it. If you add in two electric buses, you know, does the price per day go up by X for that same quote? Or and then how if we were getting some sort of reimbursement, how did that, how does that work? Do you know?
Reimbursement for what?
Well, we've got incentive, I guess is what I'm saying.
But we're not eligible.
I know, but I'm just saying if we were getting the incentive, she was asking how would we have bid it if we were eligible for the incentive, right, Melissa?
Yeah, like you said, we called this meeting today to see what we would do with the electric buses. But yesterday, Tuesday, we found out we weren't eligible for incentives, but what if you, we were theoretically eligible for an incentive, what would we be talking about?
It would be buying buses.
It would be buying the buses.
We would not get an incentive if the company.
Yeah, got it. That's, that's the answer we need.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I know there's some incentives for lease programs. Again, I don't think we're eligible for any of them, but there are fleet. Like we talked to the guy and he worked with NRT and some districts were like electrifying like half of the buses or a third. And there's still, there's some incentive pass-throughs. But I think the incentives are going to large fleets is what it, like Worcester, you know, they're trying to electrify a dozen buses at a time, not one. So I don't, I, I understand that. I just am curious how we would go about either piloting, because I think a lot of the concerns are, okay, how far do they go in the winter, right? Like they can go, I think eighty miles under charge in the winter. Bob, I think you said we only go about thirty. And one bus goes about thirty miles a day.
Roughly, yeah.
Okay, so I think, you know, some of the concerns are addressable, but obviously if we longer term want to go full electric fleet, it would be nice to have piloted it with a couple of buses, but it doesn't, there's no mechanism to say we'd be interested in a portion of the fleet as electric. Maybe walk us through like what the process, what, what you were going to ask for and what's going to be the response.
I agree.
I don't know how to do it for an alternative because doing, if it's just one bus, it's going to affect not, not the price of the other seventeen buses. So doing it as an alternative is not, is going to. It, it won't be like an apples to apples comparison.
So again, could I say, and you could say yes or no? If we wanted to specify two buses, we would specifically need to write the spec to say sixteen buses, whatever engine you want, two buses, electric, and then include the daily rates as is, so that we, anybody who bid would be bidding on sixteen plus two buses? Something like that, right?
Yeah, I could break it out separate, I guess.
And then, so if we were to do that though, then obviously if a company didn't have electric buses.
It wouldn't be.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't.
And now we're going to limit the people who are going to participate and there's already such a short, I mean, a small number of bus companies out there.
We, we don't know that. So I guess the question would be is, is that an opportunity to do that? And then I guess the question is that, you know.
Is there a way to, again, I just don't want to have people not participate because we're asking that question. I mean, is there a way to state that, that we like it, but it's not a requirement? To participate? I mean, you can quote it as either, you know, giving us all, you know, diesel fuel buses or if you're able to offer and quote two, we'd like to see both.
Or we could do if there's maybe like buses throughout the length of the contract that are going to exceed like what we say, like ten years or a hundred and fifty thousand miles. We could do it as maybe like a change order during the contract.
Can I ask maybe a silly question? We are asking for a set number of buses or we give them the details and they tell us how many buses we need?
So we, for the purpose of comparing like the bids, we ask everyone to, to give us like a price, a cost per day, per bus, and then it's multiplied by how many, we, like we put eighteen in there, but then there's like a disclaimer that says like that we're not married to that number, that it can go up and down twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so in the last bid and what we would assume would happen in this bid is that we would give an example of our current routes, give an example of our current schedules and then ask that the bus company transport students to these times. So again, if we wanted to change it to twenty, we could change the bid to twenty. But we would be basing that off of routes that we don't have and then we would ask them to make up those routes. So again, I think we had the opportunity to say start at eighteen, go up to twenty if we need to. Or vice versa.
Is there an opportunity either prior to setting this contract out or as part of the contract to get someone to work with us on optimizing the routes and the schedules? Because I think that's a big part of the issues, not issues, but like something we would like to improve upon, right? We've said it before, like if we need more buses, I'd like to at least know that, right? We'd like to get the high school back to a different start time. So is there an opportunity in this process or maybe ideally before to say what would it, what would it take? To, here's our three ideal start times. What will it take to get us to those start times? If the answer is forty-five buses, then obviously we need to go back to the drawing board, but I think being married to these current routes and current schedules puts us a step back. I'd love to say we, this is our goal of this, you know, these are the start times. I, I want somebody to work with us and say like, okay, if you want these start times and eighteen buses, you need to make kids walk further or need to add buses, right? Like we need, something needs to change if we want this start time, if we want to dictate the start times, right?
So I think putting that onus on the vendor that's profiting off of the contract to, to make our routes most efficient doesn't seem like.
Well, you're happy, it's an. It's a desk after the fact. I mean, like we can say, do you have technology that allows us to?
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract, so they already have that ability as part of the contract.
But it sounds like we're maybe.
But we don't do it now, right?
Third-party consultant.
I've been asking for this for a year.
Front so that they can tell us we need another bus, uh, to, that they're going to have to bid on another bus to get their two or three or whatever it is, get the, you know, a different start time for the high school. I don't think that's.
We could bring like a, a third-party consultant on at any time to like evaluate our routes and stuff and, and we used to have the existing language in the, in the, the contract that says that we can add or remove buses so that we could make adjustments for that.
Right, and in our, in our current contract, not that I'm defending it, we do have the ability, so first, they are responsible for the routing and then we get to say yes or no to it. Second is the school committee sets the start and stop times of the school. So we're fitting into that. We have added buses in the past in order to make routes and that's just the cost of the district based on the current contract that's in place. So that is an option that we can do and, you know, obviously perfect or not, based on the conversations that we have for two months at the start of every school year. I mean, we change routes all the time. I think the short answer to your question is, is that, you know, if we wanted all those schools to start at the same time and we didn't want to limit the number of seats on buses, I mean, quite frankly, we would need fifty-four buses.
I'm not talking about the same start time, but.
No, I know, but I'm saying even if we want to remove the high school and the middle school, right? So then you would take those eighteen buses and we could cut it down to thirty-six. But like you said, these numbers aren't like a number that's thrown into the air. The numbers are based off of, you know, a forty-five ridership. And then that is kind of the reality that we see, especially at the middle school. So just looking at the middle school alone dictates the eighteen buses. You know, unless we wanted to go up to seventy for ridership, then we could obviously cut buses down. But removing buses would be difficult. Adding buses at the middle school level, it's our first tier. So it's not necessarily beneficial there. Where we would probably need more buses is at the elementary, the second tier. But again, if we add them just at the second tier and we're paying your daily rate, not super beneficial to us. So I mean, you know, obviously that's going to drive the cost up in the contract no matter what. But again, we do already.
If you add buses, then maybe the middle school starts five minutes later, you know what I mean? Like that, these are the conversations that I thought were tied into the bus contract, but if, if this is a, a more broad district conversation, then we should have it for, if you're, we could have it anytime, then I think we should have this separately to manage the fleet that we have. Then I guess it's irrelevant for this conversation, but we can have another conversation another day about all of this.
And again, so built into the contract currently and I would assume would move forward is, is that it does have some language that says school committee, you know, dictates the start and stop times and those are adjustable. It says that we have a full-time coordinator at whatever bus company that will work with us to coordinate routes. They will plan the routes. We do have a twenty-five percent clause, the plus or minus, so add even eighteen buses, give or take, you know, four and a half buses. We can go up or down if need be.
How long are we going to have the contract for this time?
So we did a five-year last time. Five-year does require, well, anything in, over three years requires a down meeting vote. But the benefit of doing the five years, obviously they can amortize the cost of the buses for a longer period.
Right.
So I think for the sake of cost, we'd go five.
Yeah, no, I, I just, you know, wanted to double check. That's what we were doing.
Then had some other.
So what are we doing about her question about, we're just going to leave everything as is or, right, you know?
Well, again, I think this is a conversation to then go back to school committee to say yes or no too, so we're taking notes and then at the next school committee, I guess we'll have to.
Talk about the electric.
I mean, yeah, I mean, because ultimately it's up to the school committee. If they want to have electric buses and we bid electric buses, if they want to have changes start times, then, then sure.
Right, so.
All right, so the start time conversation we have separately, if, if it's not related to the contract, then that's fine. I would love to see if we can somehow put language in there, like you said, like maybe it's a separate bid, like for just two electric buses, like, you know, any optionality? I don't know, not super familiar with procurement, but like extra points if you're able to add a couple of buses, electric buses in or. Optionality.
This is just based on, it's awarded on, on price.
Okay.
On qualification.
There, I thought there was some ways we could put qualifications in.
So we could have like requirements in that, so the way that in, in, in invitation or bid works is that it's, it's awarded based on the response of responsible bidder with the lowest price. So if people didn't meet like what we were asking them to provide, they wouldn't be responsive and responsible, so.
So the more.
So the idea of saying two electric buses, if they couldn't do two, they wouldn't be able to respond.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, you, you limit, you limit the pool, the more requirements there were. And if you were looking for a number two pencils with an eraser and you said they have to be blue, then obviously that's a requirement, but if you just said number two pencils, whoever comes in and gives you the best price on number two pencils wins, right?
Is there language in here that would prohibit us from say, in a year, soliciting a separate contract for two electric buses?
There is language that allows us to use additional vendors.
When they're not available to provide the service.
Okay, but we could go back to them and say we want two electric buses and if they can't provide that, we could put out a bid for it.
But they're not going to do it at the contracted price.
Yeah, that's.
Right, so I mean.
But we could, like we.
But we could put out a whole nother bid.
Right.
Over the course of the contract.
Right, but how does that change the daily rate that we, that we all agree to?
Determine.
All right, we don't know. We could ask them for that. In contract to say, hey, how much would it be for daily rate to bring on one or two buses? And then they would say, here's our price.
And we can say yea or nay, right? Yeah, we could do a change. That probably, that's probably the better option, I think, to do a change order like that, like after you get the lowest. The thing is, is that how, you know, the only caveat to that would be like, I think that's a great idea to like maybe do a change order later, but what happens if we award it to a bus company that doesn't have any electric buses?
Then we'd be able to put out a separate bid for two electric buses, right?
Or their, their, our would be buying electric buses.
Right.
And then we would foot, foot that bill over the cost of the daily rate, you know, some, something.
Nothing of that sort, right?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I'm comfortable with that if that's an option, so that's fine.
What's your timeline for putting this, or? As soon as possible, that's what I, yeah, so that's what I was trying to say, you know, do we want to wait till the school committee meeting or do we just go like a plan we just discussed?
I'm hoping to be able to get like the, our, the invitations are being approved at the next meeting so that we could get it.
Got it, yep, good. So, so you're comfortable with that, Melissa, that we put it out as it is and then we can put in a change order if we need to, to request the bus down the pike after we award this to someone, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested to see what Martha has to say, but I think that's a good recommendation.
Well, I would say make the change and then put a star next to it and then when we go to the meeting.
Right.
Obviously we.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, and I can, I can check in on some of like the legal confirms, like some of the legal stuff surrounding this too for them.
Fair enough.
And so I think there were a couple of other things that we wanted to, seat, seat belts.
Seat belts, definitely. If you don't mind, I'll go. So in the, in the current contract, it specifies that lap belts are required in all buses. I know that may sound crazy to require that, but it's not required. So in our last contract, again, we specified and then they had to retrofit and put all seat belts in, which again, which is on their dime, which obviously impacts us. So if we wanted to stay in, right, if we did not want that or did not require it, they could have them in it, but if they didn't, a vendor could still bid on it.
I hate to say it, and I don't, you know, I've just always been a person who's always worn a seatbelt. I mean, my dad was the kind of guy that hit the car, went back in the day, seat, seatbelts weren't mandatory. He put the seatbelt in his car. He was an engineer, so that's my opinion. I, I, I know kids don't always wear them, but I feel that if I were chaperoning something and we were doing like a field trip or something using those buses, you know, and you're on fifty-five mile an hour roads, I mean, I want the buses to have seatbelts, you know, that's my opinion. I, you know, Melissa, do you have an opinion on seatbelts?
Um, I just am not following the, the, the legal requirement bit. Miles came in here for a second, so it's required and some have them, but some don't.
So the state doesn't require a school bus to have seatbelts in it because they say that the seats and the high backs are compartmentalized. So not a requirement to have them. And in our current bid, last bid, we required them to be in the buses. So again, we're not opposed to staying or going. We're just seeking advice and opinions.
Right, and, and that's where I said that I prefer seatbelts, especially if the bus is going to be used for field trips and you're in sixty mile an hour traffic and I don't believe slamming the brakes on and having those cushions is going to do a lot of good. But that, you know, I was said, I wanted to hear what you had to say too.
He was on a field trip today. I was trying to see if he wore a seatbelt.
And he did not.
You wore a seatbelt on the bus?
Yeah.
You did? Go watch him in it now. Yeah, I'm fine keeping that in.
Sorry.
I'm fine keeping it in.
The crossing gates.
Yeah, so in a current contract, there was an alternative to add a crossing gate. The crossing gate is on the front bumper and when it stops, it extends to the left for either oncoming traffic, side roads, main roads. Our current buses do not have that and it's not in the current contract as a requirement. And have you heard, you heard that one, Melissa? Crossing gates?
No, sorry.
So when, when we just have like the stop sign that essentially comes out on the side, this is an additional like gate that comes out and basically blocks.
I thought that was replaced by cameras, no?
So we'll, we'll get to that in a second. So if you buy a bus, let's just assume that it's a yellow bus, has a door and has twenty-five seats in it, really?
Yes.
Now, some of the alternatives are going to be child safety check, which we'll go over in a second, cameras, GPS, the stop sign that folds out, required, red lights.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, but on the front bumper to have that yellow bar swing open.
Yeah, we don't have that now.
We do not have that now. These are the questions that we're asking if this committee.
Do we want that in?
Wants to require them, require them.
I haven't seen those in years. Again, I thought they were replaced by a front camera.
Well, but what, the, the purpose of that is to stop people from going around the bus, like they see that extra.
Purpose of that is to make sure there's not a kid in front of the bus that a driver can't see.
Well, both. I mean, it creates a fake gate, you know, that's eight feet, so hopefully.
Someone doesn't go around it, like, right, so I mean, I personally, like I've seen how some of our bus drivers don't, you know, like they don't have that and I've seen them like on the narrower streets or like if there's a curve or something, I see they kind of block the traffic the other direction and then put their, they kind of go at it, you know, over the line and to keep people from going around. I mean, that's what they're doing. So I mean, I, I don't feel like it has to be a requirement, just personally, I.
I don't even see them frequently on other.
I don't either. I mean, I could see it maybe in like if you had it, you know, a major city, the four lanes or something where you're really trying to block, but I don't, personally, I don't think it should be a requirement, but Melissa, you have a preference one way or the other? On that.
I mean, we haven't had them in five years, right? So I don't know.
Right.
So, so not a requirement for today?
No.
But.
Have it, fine.
Yeah, again, if they have it on the bus, different story.
Right, you know, that's bonus.
You want me to go there and go cameras? So cameras, the last time was a option. They just happened to have them on the buses from the vendor that was selected for us.
I think they should be a requirement.
So cameras requirement.
Yeah, I guess.
I will say from my personal opinion.
Raise it frequently, that's why I said I guess it's a good idea because I think it's um, it's not a he said, she said thing, you've got. Evidence, yeah.
You know, so then that would lead me into GPS, which was also the same as cameras before, not required. Um but on the buses that we have, um and very beneficial.
So I want the app, um. The the parent app.
So the bus company would have to install or have software um to use the GPS in the bus. Then I could turn around and go on it on my phone and say, bus seven is driving down the street right now.
You can see it's late and without him.
Yeah, I'm not, I think that's that's a key to ridership right there, is the ability to not have to wait at the bus stop for twenty minutes. Um to be able to stay in your house as long as and be able to go out at the last second. Also on the way home, people feel more comfortable knowing when their kid is gonna come home.
Yeah, I I agree with you, I just don't like that as a selling point, that we can stay in our house to the last minute and then.
No, no, right, I think it's more of like, if the bu- you're out at the bus stop and the bus is running late, you can track.
Hundred percent.
Want it to be that you're waiting to, unless it's twenty below zero, I mean.
Yeah, just.
But I don't want it to be the norm.
I feel that will impact times.
So.
But like I definitely agree, yes. Again, option right now for the current company, but at a cost to us. And then same if we were to.
How much are those, do you know?
Roughly eighty grand.
Total, for all buses?
For the year.
For the year.
Yeah.
If I wait, okay.
So eighteen buses, hundred and eighty days.
I I mean, I kinda like the idea as well, so.
That that was just one.
Yeah.
Vendor that they were using and they would have to.
Like, you know, I guess what I what I keep, you know, with. You know, I'm not living it like you are, Melissa, and some other people, but I do hear it from other people and, you know. Whatever bus company we have, we don't know what their staffing is gonna be like and we all know there's trouble staffing everywhere, I mean, hospitals, whatever. And so anything to cut down on phone calls going into whatever bus company we go with and. Phone calls coming into you guys, I mean, this app might be well worth it, you know, in my opinion.
Agreed, um required or alternate?
I think it needs to be required.
Yeah, I I I'm gonna go with that too. Cause I mean, I, yeah, if in four or five years, I just think it.
Yeah, and then child check, um. Again, pretty standard right now on every bus, so I would expect it to be there anyways. Um I would say required that it has to be there and not an option. Um and what the child check is, is that once they come to a complete stop, let's say at a school, and they let all the students off. Um they're required to walk to the back of the bus, uh and then hit a button. Or they cannot put the bus into drive and go. So that makes them verify that all the students are off the bus.
Yeah, that's fine. How does that work? Like, how does it know it's at a, it stopped at the school and not just a bus stop?
Cause you put it in park.
You put it in park?
Yeah, you put the bus in, it does it doesn't, it's not related to the school, but I mean, once you're, and then you put the bus in park. And then. And then you open the door and then students get out, so when you're driving down the street, you don't put the bus in park at a stop. Um, cause if you did.
It's a little unsafe, but okay.
Yeah, um so safety check required.
We had the um age of buses.
What's the age?
At the start, so this is what we had previously at the start of the contract, one third of the buses must be new. One third of the buses must be no more than three years old, and one third of the buses must be no more than five years old. Um no bus during the term of the contract can exceed ten years old. Bless you, or have more than a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
That second part is just state law, right? The ten-year, hundred and fifty thousand mile?
Yeah, I like that. Makes sense to me.
Right, so, but again, it comes down to um. If we want the newest, latest, greatest buses, if we were to say all buses must be new every single year, we, that's ridiculous.
What percentage of the buses need to be what ages? Ten years old, a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
So why not?
Standard. I mean, why not? Why are we saying one third have to be new?
Right, so I mean, that, a three-year-old bus isn't like, I mean, I just drove a ten-year-old car, I mean, buses are.
So so the flip side is. If you took everything away except for that last sentence. We could start the contract with nine-year-old buses.
Yeah, no, 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 that I.
No, 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 but what I'm saying, right, you could do that, or.
Right.
Right, and then next year they would have to buy, or two years from now they would have to buy a bus, right?
I I, you know, I, again, I don't know why we'd have to say a third have to be brand new, I mean, I guess we could start off nothing older than three years and then.
But then they'd be eight years by the end of the contract, right? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, yeah.
So for example, our current buses right now, um six are from two thousand and nineteen and all the rest. Are older than two thousand and nineteen. Um so for example, if we were to extend our current contract with the current buses, for example, with the language that's in there.
So I see your, yeah.
Then it looks like. You know, seventy percent of the buses would need to be replaced throughout the contract. So then the bus company obviously has to factor that into their pricing.
Right.
Now, I made up the seventy percent, so if it's not accurate, just, I'm just saying roughly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um but.
Is that typical, Nicole, like, I know the state helped with these RFPs, is that like typical language?
The we take the one-third, one-third?
Yeah.
I haven't seen that anywhere else. I've seen like people limiting it to like. Ten years old, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, or it's in some, or sometimes they they bring that, just bring that threshold lower. So we we could say.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think new, I don't think we need new buses per se, um.
So what, Melissa, what'd you think?
Yeah, I agree that I don't think we need to require new buses.
Okay.
So whatever verbiage we can put in there so that we're not, you know, we don't have super old buses.
I think half, maybe like half newer than three and half newer than five.
Can we break, can we break it down into three parts, just cause that's how it is right now, so. One one third of buses must be new at the contract, yes or no?
I don't think they have to be brand new, I you agree.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, can we just say half younger than three, half younger than five, and that's it?
And not older than ten.
Well, yeah, that's state law, I don't think that you can drive like um kids in a ten, older than ten, I know Marge. Or anybody, I think Marge gets upset at the senior center that they can't drive ten-year-old vans over there.
So but what if we just eliminate like that one-third, 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 and we changed, instead of it saying. Ten years old, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, why don't we just knock those down?
I got you. So like, everything has to be younger than eight or hundred twenty five, I don't know, I get what you're saying, so they have to replace it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the no bus during the term of the contract can exceed.
Okay.
Years old or have more than.
A hundred whatever thousand mile.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good, that's right.
Just make sure we come up with the good mile, you know, is it gonna be a hundred and?
The mileage on our buses, Bob?
Like, how many miles a year?
I'd have to ask for a new report.
Yeah, give me what you have.
Oh, current mileage on the buses.
Right, so I mean, some had twenty-five hundred, five thousand, and then something that was at the time. Three years old, had twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five thousand miles on it, something that was. Um four years old, had about fifty-five, forty-five, so.
All right, so a hundred thousand seems reasonable for an eight-year-old bus, if a four-year-old bus is at forty-five.
So we have a bus from what, two thousand fifteen?
Yep.
That has sixty-two thousand, almost sixty-three thousand miles on it.
All right, that's an eight-year-old bus.
But no, right, that's what I'm trying to say, so, but that's, I'm just saying to help us determine the threshold.
But again, so that would have been a four-year-old bus at the at the start of the contract.
Right.
Right?
Exactly.
I mean, I think a hundred is reasonable to say, keep it less than a hundred thousand.
Right.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying, I, you know, where do we put that threshold and where are we comfortable based on this information?
Yeah, cause we don't, we wanna make sure that we're also not getting like.
Right.
The buses better in their tenth year that other districts are saying we don't want those and they're like, keep it over to us.
Exactly, to hand me down.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So that you're saying at no point in the con- in these five years can a bus reach older than eight years or more than a hundred thousand miles?
Yes, correct.
Right? They can't give us a seven, if they give us a seven-year-old bus next year, they, it's on them to replace it the following year.
If they start off today with a seven-year-old bus, and yet they can drive that for a year, and then move it on.
But the next year doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna buy a new bus, they could get us another seven-year-old bus.
Right, or a three-year-old bus or whatever.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, so we'd have to be comfortable with that, then I guess if this is our language, we could be, have a fleet of seven-year-old buses with ninety thousand miles on them, right?
Y- yes. Yeah. So again, that's probably why the contract. Third new, with her.
That's why we were saying to put in like half at at three or whatever and then.
But they're also not gonna, that they they will know, right, if this this bus is. If that's not reasonable and they're not gonna be able to provide the service.
Yeah.
But right now, it's written, so right now, what does it say? On day one. One-third new, one-third three, one-third five?
One-third.
That's day one?
Yep, must.
Okay, so.
Must be new, and we define.
But I'm just asking, so that's on day one, so as of today, we don't have, we don't. Need, we don't have any new buses, right? It's not like any, they have to, we don't have any new buses right now, or do we?
Hold on a second, so, no to your second question.
Okay.
On day one, they had to have one-third of the buses must be new. We define new, we define new as in two thousand and nineteen, it had to be a two thousand and nineteen model bus.
Yeah, yeah.
By some of them have two thousand miles on it, and we qualify those as brand new, right?
Yeah.
And then it says one-third of the buses must be no more than three years old. And one-third of the buses must be no more than five years old. This is on day one of the contract.
Yeah.
So I don't know how we reconcile, like. Eliminating the day one requirement, because if we just add a lifetime requirement, like I said, we could be, every kid could be on a seven-year-old bus. Every year.
Well, we could say right off the bat, on day one, no bus can be more than five years old.
Right.
And no. Can we have a eight-year or ten-year?
Yeah. Yeah.
Again, if it was a seven-year-old bus, they can't use it day one of the contract, so on this one, yeah, they all had to be less than five. Some had to be three and some had to be brand new.
Right.
So.
I think maybe we do the fifty percent under three, fifty percent under five on day one and the eight years and a hundred thousand miles.
Sorry, say it again. Fifty percent under three. Fifty percent under five.
On day one, yeah.
That's the contract.
I mean, unless we think that's too limiting, but we got out the, I'm fine with eliminating the new requirement. I don't like the idea of just every bus being seven-year, like cycling us through seven-year-old buses.
So again, let me play this out, if I have a five-year-old bus, day one. The life of the contract, if we kept it at ten years, I could keep that bus and we could have ten-year-old buses on the fifth year of the contract. If we moved it to eight years.
It's gonna drive the cost.
Then we're gonna force them to buy fifty percent of their buses brand new. Or newer.
But you implied that they didn't have to give us a new bus.
So someone's not.
When the old one goes.
Buy fifty percent buses new, right?
Like if the bus reaches, okay, the the day one, they give us a five-year-old bus, and year three, it ages out. Do they have to get a new bus there, or can they give us a seven-year-old bus?
So if again, in our current contract, the buses never exceeded unless they open over on mileage. So if you signed the contract with the oldest oldest bus for five years and then you have a five-year contract. That bus won't hit ten years until the end of the contract unless the mileage goes over. So at no point will we have a older than ten-year bus.
Right, but like, okay, go ahead.
We could spell it out and add it that says at no point in the contract can you have a. Oh no, if you were, any replacement buses? Yeah, I'm trying to think, cause if you say.
Replacement buses can't be older than blah, maybe you can put that in there, like, so when it gets to the end of its.
If a bus ages out and needs to be replaced.
By.
A new bus.
A new bus or a bus not older than.
Bus be five years or less?
Less, right, that's what you'd have to do.
I mean, very specific, so that we would re- require them to.
But that means they don't have to buy a new bus, right?
Yeah, but they'd have to acquire a bus that's five years.
Right.
Or less.
Yeah, I mean, you tell me, like, if we just put in that eight-year requirement, are they gonna give us a fleet of seven-year, like, we run the risk, right? They don't have to, if it ages out, they don't have to replace it with a new bus, right?
No, not necessarily, but it, but again, like, they're not, they're, they're gonna. They're not gonna put, give us buses that aren't gonna be able to get kids to and from school.
So should we just say that at the start of the contract, all buses should be no more than five years old and anytime during the contract? No more than ten years?
Let's say that again.
At start of the contract, all buses. Must be five years or less.
Yeah.
And then no point in the contract.
Could be more than ten.
Could be more than ten. So that means we, the highest we can have is five years, and for the next five years, we could have an eight, nine-year-old bus in five years from now.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
You know, and anyway.
But right now, I thought, what is the oldest bus we have now, seven or eight?
No, the oldest.
And like, once they give us a bus, it stays to be our bus, right, like. They can't say like, okay, this year we gave you four-year-old buses. Next year, they're five, and then the following year, oh, they're all, they're all nine, like, it's the same buses, right?
No, no, again, we're, we're defining the terms of the service that they're providing us, so if we say. Drive these students in a bus that's no more than ten years old. They just have to find a bus that's less than ten years old.
Right.
Right, I guess I'm just trying to understand, like Nicole's comment, that they would just keep giving us seven-year-old buses, like. Uh I'm just trying to understand, like, if they give us a bus, like bus eighteen, does that stay our bus, or can they, like. Keep giving us older and older buses? Like the fu- like, if we said it has to be, like, this idea of it has to be younger than ten. Like, okay, are they just gonna, could they just keep giving us nine-year-old buses?
On paper, yes.
Okay.
Unless we put additional clause that says.
Right.
Right? I mean, and I, unless you get, you wanna change and say at no point in the contract can a bus be more than six years old. So that means.
Okay, but so.
Whatever you want.
Let me follow this through, so the old contract said, day one, we need one-third to be new, right?
And.
But they have given us those day one new buses, and then on year two, swap those all out with nine-year-old buses.
Yes. So if tomorrow. So if tomorrow bus dies, tomorrow.
Yeah.
There is no requirement in the contract, except for have hu- less than a hundred and fifty thousand miles and be less than ten years old.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Then, I guess I'm not sure why, why we even dictate year one, if in year two, they could replace the entire fleet with whatever they want, right?
Well, and that's why, this was one of the things that I brought up, because I think that that, the way we have it in this past one. Didn't help to bring prices down.
Okay. No, I'm following now, so this year one makes no difference if they could replace all those brand new buses the next year. It helps us in one year, perhaps, but then they could theoretically. Replace all those buses with nine year old buses.
But would they?
So.
Yeah, I mean, again, there's some other requirements too with like sticker ring and all this other stuff.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, that you're gonna rem- remark, you're gonna, you know, buy a new bus and put Burlington School System on the side of it and.
Yeah, it is, it is minimal, but it is something.
Still a pain.
Right, um, so yeah, a hundred percent is an option, um.
So then maybe we go back to the eight years, hundred thousand miles.
Kid, well, you had stated something about the fi- five years, like, like, maybe a replacement bus can't be more than five years old. You know, because some, a replacement bus of something, how do we word it so that they can't? Give us all nine year old buses.
But do we care?
We haven't had anyone care.
They're eight or nine year old buses, if they're getting kids to and from school and have all the.
Well, also, we've, we've made enough requirements that I don't think they're gonna get eight year old buses with cameras on them, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm not, yeah, I saw they did, right, oh, I was just gonna say, same thing with seat belts if we're requiring that.
Yeah, safety checks is.
It's good, they're gonna be.
Alright, I'm happy with the no bus can be more than eight years or a hundred thousand miles.
Right, that, that's clean. And again, they have to be inspected uh twice a year anyways. So at a bare minimum, we can't have a rust hole, one that doesn't start with bald tires, driving our kids around.
Right.
So.
And if they keep giving us seven year old buses and they keep giving us new fleets of newish, new buses every year. It's on them.
So at no point during the contract. Um, can any bus exceed eight years or a hundred thousand miles?
Yes.
So again, if they give us, see, they could give us eight year old buses every year, but that's okay.
Yeah, but again, that's still an outlay for them.
No, no, that's what I'm trying to say, it doesn't matter, I don't think they're gonna do that, but.
Yeah.
They have to box all their fleet at the same time, which we know doesn't happen, so.
Then at least they'd be replaced, right? Bus eighteen might start.
Melissa, did you say you were in agreement for five year?
Yeah, five years.
Contract and like, like overall link?
For five years, even though we have to get approval on the five year contracts.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, do you have more questions? I have one.
I, I think that was all I had on my list.
Okay, do we make any staffing requirements of them, like X number of backup drivers?
There's something in there, there's, there's, there's something in there from the past about, um.
Do we increase it?
Bob can read it, he read it just before.
I can find it, when the, um, the two buses that are extra, what were they called?
Spare.
Spare.
Yes.
I think they.
Not the extra buses, but the extra drivers.
I know, but that also requires, I know the word is adequately.
Yeah, bus drivers. He read it to us before, but about probably six months ago. It's also how quickly they have to find a replacement driver too, right? There's some wording in there.
But, uh, the contractor shall furnish fully and properly licensed drivers to operate any vehicles. Used in carrying out the transportation services under the terms of this contract, including spare drivers. Um, wasn't, wasn't there something in there about how quickly they had to, like, they had twenty minutes or?
Uh, it does say twenty minutes in the event of a malfunction or breakdown.
Right.
Uh, they need to respond, so that, that's twenty minutes in there. That cough is horrible, um.
He was just frustrated, it hasn't gone away yet.
Can you get a legal op- opinion on like, can we say, um, a pool of spare drivers, like, and put a number? And we can, and I'll leave the number up to kind of Bob or, um, you can, is there? Um.
Uh, you know.
I think that's a big issue.
Like that in there, they have enough trouble finding regular drivers, so if you're telling them that they have to have a pool of. On top of that, of, you know, how many, X number of spare drivers, then again, we're gonna have people who may not bid at all, because they can't meet that requirement.
Or they're gonna be paying.
And I think that's okay.
We're gonna be paying, right, to, to have people do nothing.
Yeah.
You know. So that they can be pulled should there be an absence, I mean, how often do we have to replace drivers, because someone doesn't come in?
A lot, I would imagine.
Can I assume that you're not happy with the current buses? Melissa, I'm just wondering.
Correct, I mean, I'm not unhappy, but I think there could be a lot, there's room for improvement.
Okay. Um, again, that's fine, I'm just wondering, because, um, yeah, one hundred percent. Right, we've stated a million times that we can tailor the contract to whatever service level we want them to meet. Um, obviously, we can decide if it's a warning, if it's a, we wanna penalize them. Um, we can one hundred percent put that in there, but I guess the question would be is, you know. Then what happens, okay, we penalize them, but we still don't have a driver.
Right, that does, right, I agree, we haven't had that happen. That's why I asked, is how often do we not have a replacement driver?
Um, very, very infrequently that we haven't had a drive, have we been late? Yes, hundred percent.
Right.
But, um, not physically having a driver.
Right, and then, um, and again, late, so. S- a driver calls in sick, and so do you, do we know the breakdown, how often that happens? And that we're running late because of it, I mean, is that, is that a big issue that you hear from people, Melissa, that, you know?
And I think that's one of the biggest issues in the unreliability. I mean, number one, the biggest issue of ridership, in my opinion, is what the perceived or accurate unreliability of buses.
Right, so.
Be that, it be late, early, um.
So. If we're putting the GPS device in there though, right? That kind of helps parents, you know, because it's, it's, it's an issue with parents knowing where the bus is, right? Like, again, people are gonna be sick.
Yeah, and the kids missing school.
So, you know, yes, you know, you're hoping that they're responsible enough, all the companies are responsible enough to have a. Hopefully, a backup pool of people who are gonna be call, on call, you know, to come in and replace those drivers. But I think the angst with parents is not knowing that bus is running late and they're standing out there for fifteen minutes waiting. So if we have the requirement of this parent app, then that, I think that helps with that angst and. We don't need to add something in there saying you need a pool of ten drivers, you know, that we're paying for all year long to do nothing. I mean, I shouldn't say nothing, but they're not, uh, aren't gonna use that often, and we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, A, we have the GPS already, so I think if somebody wanted us to run a report, we could. Um, moving forward, if we had the parent app availability, then we could, um, rely more on that. Um, again, the, the late, the sub, the, um, no bus driver, I think is. I shouldn't have put a two lumping together, the no bus driver is less of a past history problem. Than running late, and I think that if we could message or through the app, let parents know that. That is a win.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's definitely something that we lack right now. Um, it's easy to go afterwards and say, yeah, the bus was running five minutes late, here's the GPS report. But, so I would say definitely having that in there. Um, again, I'm not opposed to saying that they need to have spare drivers already in the contract, the number of spare drivers, sure. Um. But again, I don't know what that number would look like.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, do we have stats on, you know, how often buses are late because it's taking them too long? Or they don't have a spare driver, and it sounds to me that they always find a spare driver, because we haven't been without someone, isn't that right?
Yeah, a lot of the times where we run into issues with no driver availability is in the afternoon for charters or what? Um, athletics.
Right.
Music, things like that, uh, but we're seeing that, I'm gonna say widespread. And, um, even vendors that we're calling not our current vendor, um, are having difficulty fulfilling those. So talking with other districts and so forth, the after school stuff is really difficult.
I get that.
Um. So. So, sorry, Longman didn't answer.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, I think last time we, I know there was concerns, I mean, there is concerns. Around the fact that we must take the lowest bidder, right? Like, there's this idea of, I think there's a perception, be it maybe reality or not, that we're. Um, we're just getting the cheapest, um, contract, and maybe it's not the most high quality. So like, this contract is, like Nicole said, the contract is the only way to build in quality and accountability. So it's easy to say, um, they're not accountable, um. It's easy to kind of look back and say, like, this is a terrible company or it's a terrible contract. But it's only as good as however we write it, whatever accountability we build in. So if there's no accountability for the late, late drivers, um, things like that, then that's a little bit on us. I understand it may cost more and it may be able, I mean, we obviously have to navigate. The getting people to respond, but I would like people to respond that are able to get the drivers on time every day.
This is a perfect sidebar for what I've been saying for years, is that. Um, and it's only to get worse, mark my word, um, just because of Kevor Street, but the time between tiers.
Yeah.
Very, very, very tight. So.
And that's one hundred percent, we need to look at that with or without the bus company. Um, I, I wanna hold them accountable for the, obviously for tier one in the morning, right? Like, I, I'm not gonna try and hold drivers accountable for the third tier.
Yeah.
Um, but, and again, I'm happy to sit with you, I would love to see what is gonna make us. What's gonna allow us to move the high school start term earlier, what's gonna allow us to maybe reduce time between tiers? If it's more buses, it's more buses, if it's longer walks.
Yeah, but any, on the previous tier for those buses to free up, we're at their mercy, period.
So back to the first tier buses and lateness or tardiness due to. Drivers calling an absent or whatever, is there a way to, I mean, I, you know, you're talking about holding them accountable, right? So, you know, and if we're gonna track, like, we're keeping track of that, right, somewhere? So can we put something in there to say that if, um, you know, it's like if there's a pattern, if there's. You know, find that you're, you know, on average each quarter, you know, you're late twenty percent of the time, then we get a refund. Or we get some sort of compensation for that, because then you're giving them a little leeway, you know, so you're saying, you know. Maybe we put something like that in there, um, so you're at least holding them accountable, so there's some sort of incentive for them to. Be more motivated to find the, so you're not putting a number of drivers that they have to have spare, but you're just saying, if you can't, you know, if you're. Perform, underperforming by our standards, you're gonna owe us something.
Yeah, so, that, this isn't in ours, but, um, to have, instead of a specific number of sub drivers. The contractor's responsible for maintaining sufficient standby and substitute bus drivers for all runs at all times, at no additional cost to the district. Um, all set, such standby and substitute bus drivers shall be familiar with the designated bus route to the maximum extent possible. And then we could add a sentence, but that says like, in the event that you're like, um, you know.
Tier one start times are off by X percent, right?
Yes, right, um, how we wanna word that, what were you saying, Melissa?
Um, I would say like, tier one, first stop times are off by more than ten percent. I don't know, I, Nicole, I, this is where I would love to, to state, like.
So if you're.
But we could just say for any route running twenty minutes off schedule, you know, not due to emergency.
Or due to, like, not having a sufficient.
Not staffing.
Because otherwise, like, they can't control if there's.
Right, not, I think it's.
But that's what I was gonna say, though.
So, like, a, right, a staffing.
The first stop on the tier one.
Staffing issue, not like, um, you know, again, we all try to plan ahead, that there's a blizzard and.
Yeah.
You know, you're trying to clean your car off on time, I mean, you know, but it's a co- consistent, um.
Right.
If it's due.
The first stop on the tier one run, if they're late to that.
Yeah, so.
Do we do a number of times or a percentage of time off?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, if you're, if, um, we find that, you know, more than twenty percent of the time in a quarter or something like that. That you're not staffing properly, then you owe us blah, so what number do we wanna make that, right?
I wouldn't even hold it to staffing, right, like, the bus eighteen is late because it won't start, that's on the bus, right? That's a bus maintenance issue, so if, if your first stop on tier one. I don't really care why, right, like, that's, the bus company needs to be accountable to get that bus driver, get that bus. On, whoever's driving it, to the first stop on time, um, I would do. Yeah, I, maybe a number of days, or I guess a percentage is probably easier.
What if we just?
If it's not, if it's more than.
Daily.
Minute.
What were you saying, Nicole?
What if we do it like, um, like for, one fourth of the daily.
A one fourth?
Of the, of the bus, with the pen, would be the penalty.
So, yeah, one fourth of the, yeah, I like the penalty, you just said, one fourth of the daily rate, but do we wanna say if. You know, per month or per quarter, you're twenty, you know, twenty percent of the time, and we, what percent are we putting in there for the penalty?
Every instance.
Oh, every, that.
So, there's a clause in there that it's only for weather under a certain temperature. That if the buses are not starting and ready to go by six forty five, um, that they need to notify us. So I wonder if we could just, um, adjust that whole clause to say. All buses must be started on the lot and ready to go by. You know, thirty minutes prior to the first run.
I mean, I'm comfortable saying if you were more than five minutes late to that first stop, the quarter of the day. Five minutes is a lot of time, throws the entire. Um, and it's up to them to manage their operations to get them there.
Snow or ice, you know, like, they, they started their bus on time, right? They, they got there when they were supposed to, and then, um, all of a sudden, the road turns icy. And now you're telling somebody to speed so that they're not.
Yeah.
More than five minutes late, you know, and they have an accident and it's even worse. So you gotta put a reasonable, and five minutes is tough.
Well, again, unless you put a, except due to weather.
Yeah, accident, I, well, what do you wanna call it, acts of God.
Right, again, so would that just be, uh, for, you know, all buses must be available thirty minutes prior to the start of the first run?
The only time that we've had, if, is, had this happen is if they're not able to, to staff it, right? So if we just say that the penalty is.
Yeah.
Due to, only due because of them not being adequately able to staff the bus.
Yeah, because there is a clause for if they, let's say the bus breaks down.
Right.
Then they have a twenty minute window.
Right.
In order to provide another driver in the bus.
Yeah, I think we need to, right, I agree.
Even if it won't start at the station, like, that's what's annoying, like, they can have, bus eighteen. Even if it won't start at the station, like, that's what's annoying. Like, they can have, bus eighteen is late to start all the time and it throws off the whole route and that should be on the bus.
Where that's that is coming from?
Coming from my driveway, Bob.
And they're telling you that it's late at the middle school every single day, but then makes the high school time every day? Uh, that's why I'm just asking the question, because I mean, I get notified of the buses at the middle school. Um, I'm not questioning your statement. I'm just, I don't understand where that.
Well, she'll tell me that it doesn't start.
Who's telling you?
I mean, I think she makes up the time. I don't know. I can't tell you about the middle school run. I can ask Liz, but like, if the bus.
The bus doesn't start?
So if she's late at your stop, bus eighteen, she's telling you that the bus didn't start in the morning?
I mean, half the time she's in bus two. The bus eighteen doesn't start.
That that's allowed in the contract for obviously them to have a spare. So I guess my question would be is if, if it was late for tier one, then obviously I would expect to know of that. But again, the tier two, tier three, like I said, we're at the mercy of.
No, no, I get it. And I know I'm tier two, but I'm saying like, I don't wanna say if you're consistently, the penalty is only if you're late because of a driver. Penalty is a, if you're late because something in your control, then you get a penalty, like, whether and like, this idea of weather, I mean, I'll give you some of the weather, but some, then if we're saying that it should be started thirty minutes prior, then they it shouldn't be. I know where they're coming from. They're not coming. We, I mean, I'm fine with weather, but that's probably the only, like,
Well, yeah, maybe we could say accident.
argue about weather.
You can't just say weather because accidents occur and whatever, right? So it's gotta be something more.
Traffic.
Right, this is, right. Because you can't, there's.
Again, if there's traffic, I think they should be leaving sooner than, right? Like, these are all within, again, we're just talking about the first stop.
Well, you know, Melissa, there are days that I I could drive to the airport, um, you know, five, five days a week. And, um, you know, I can get in Monday, Wednesday, Friday in twenty-five minutes and Tuesday, Thursday, it takes me an hour. So you're telling me someone has to be in an hour early every day when, you know, some days of the week you can get in faster than others, right? So you're, I get what you're saying, like, we all need to build in enough cushion, but it can't be such a ridiculous amount that no one wants to work for them.
And especially.
I mean, they're not going to the airport. They're going to.
Right, but you know, Route three, you can't predict. Like, you don't know where they're driving from to get to work.
The buses are coming from Wilmington. I know exactly where they're coming from.
Right, I get it, but I'm just saying that you don't know what's what's going on.
But that's a discipline, that's like a, that's a that's a late employee that they should either get a substitute driver. Then every time, like, oh, sorry, I was late to work, traffic. Okay, no problems.
I said that. I'm just saying that there are things that you can't predict. I mean, and I realize they're in Wilmington. It's not that far of a drive, but stuff happens. I just.
But then what are we, then what are we holding them accountable if they're gonna be able to say, oh, I was late to work because of traffic?
No, no, I'm talking, you know, we're talking about we've already, we're already penalizing them if if they're consistently, we've already put that clause in there, right? If they're not staffing properly. So again, if someone's not coming in on time or they don't have a replacement, they can get penalized for that, right?
Yeah, I I'm not even arguing the point. I I support it.
Right.
I think that the number of times that the bus is late for tier one or others because of malfunction breakdown um, or lack of driver is less than the traffic situations that we're seeing on a daily basis. Um, almost all the reports that we get are due to traffic and construction, hundred percent. Um, we definitely get reports on we don't have a driver, so we're gonna have to spare and it's running five minutes late. We have had buses break down, yes. Um, but I'm saying that statistically, yeah, traffic is the number one killer for us.
Okay, but.
Like, it's not an issue. Was construction everywhere in Burlington, everywhere, especially in your neighborhood. You know it, but.
Uh, yeah, I I'm one hundred percent. I I'm talking only about first stop first here.
True. No, I agree.
Only what the bus company can control, and I'm happy to give them a cushion, right? So more than five, ten times
So we, what did you? Nicole had some verbiage that.
I just like unable to furnish a substitute driver that would penalize for one fourth of the the daily rate, um, or occurrence, but we could do it like after five occurrences.
Well, I'm saying they've been able to furnish the driver, just then they become not on time, right? So I would like to suggest we say if the tier one stop one time is more than five minutes late
affected.
and ten times in a quarter, every time over that ten is a quarter of a bus.
Can can we say that? I much want to finalize it right now. Yes.
I mean, we could.
If you want to penalize them, we can look at some language and see, but
Yeah, yeah.
you know.
We might be able to find something someone else has put somewhere too.
I just searched a couple. I didn't see anything, but um, I can keep looking.
But concept wise, like, we get it. Like, we don't want them to be late on their problem.
Their problem, right.
Yeah, so I just did quick math. There's like, there's eighteen buses, right? Let's say twenty school days a month, that's three hundred and sixty opportunities here, right? A month.
Times two, because of the afternoon.
Well, no, I'm just talking, okay, you're right. So tier one there too. All right.
Oh, well, talking about them not being of the staff, the afternoons too, for our um, after school activities is an issue there too.
Dismissed.
So that's seven hundred and twenty bites at the apple.
Then it kills us.
That kills everything. Yep, yeah.
So seven hundred and twenty, I would say ten percent of that is seven. So if we say seven, oh, sorry, that's one percent, ten percent is seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
So, uh.
We all look at each other.
Five percent, maybe? So it's like thirty, that's a lot, feels like.
Yeah.
That's a lot, yeah.
Are we gonna say per per bus or overall? So if I'm late on bus.
I was gonna say overall.
If I'm late on bus two, I would almost just say that for any bus that starts arrival or dismissal due to mechanical or lack of
Staffing.
staffing.
Yep.
Would incur a twenty-five dollar penalty. I mean,
Yeah.
I'm making that number up, but I'm saying theory wise, that's where I'm kinda going with it.
Yep.
Because they have to count.
Yep.
It's been thirty-one, but it's not thirty-two, so we're not gonna penalize them, like. I don't know. I mean, again, or five in a month, fine, but I mean, what happens when we're on twenty-six? They passed, but we don't send them a bill like that's, yeah.
I mean, I was trying to give them the life happens and maybe one person one day got stuck in the Route three rollover, so like, that's out of their control a little bit, so.
Five.
But.
In a month, for all total buses, maybe? Like I said, that's.
They'll come up with.
Let's thank.
The, the, yeah, you guys. You know where we're going. I like it.
Accountability.
Yeah, you agree, accountability, definitely.
That's like, I think I've got rid of it.
Yeah.
Surprisingly.
Um.
Nicole, just share it with each other at this point.
Well, we have fifty-two meetings a week, so.
Well, of course, Elizabeth brings it home, but elementary school, she'd strut through.
Yeah. Every time I hang out with my nephews, I end up with some.
Right. What's the next thing we need to, Melissa, you had something else on your list of things you wanted to talk about?
No, that was my, the accountability bit was my last item.
Anything from you two?
I.
We already discussed.
No, we had obviously dates and other things like that based on the other contract. So I mean, those were the the big points with those ones.
Hmm.
Um.
Is there anything else? I don't think there's anything else we brought up in any of the school committee meetings. I didn't see anything that stuck out that you already talked about.
Again, no buses are required to have air conditioning in them. Right, it's it's not in the contract, but I'm saying it's not, we're not asking for it that I'm aware of, or are we?
No, we don't live in.
Yeah, yeah.
We live in, like, Arizona.
Is it available? Like, do some of them have, like, what would the price, do you have any idea what would do to the price?
They do make air conditioned buses, um, but around here typically.
You could barely get a house.
No, I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, typically buses don't have air conditioning in them.
Or some retrofit.
Yeah, when I was being sarcastic, I wasn't. Uh, buying a core bus, seats, opening door, CB radio, and lights, end of story, right? Um, it will have heat floors and then it will have windows, has to have emergency doors and emergency windows, has to. Uh, but then, like I said, everything else is an outfit. If you want GPS, if you want seatbelts, if you want cameras, um.
It's all value add.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, a price.
Yep, yep.
Individual timing screens.
Yeah, entertainment screens, like.
I mean, even if you wanted individual windows, like, that's a cost.
Yeah.
Sticker ring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um. Again, required to have a first aid kit.
Yeah.
No question about it.
Yep.
Uh. Obviously, they're required to pass a drug test and not do drugs and smoke on the bus. Uh.
That's helpful.
Yeah, just so those are the ones that we don't wanna skip, you guys. You can read these contracts anytime you want, but.
Right, right, thanks.
See, so again, here's a unavoidable delays in the event of an unavoidable delay uh, which interfere with the proper performance of a scheduled route. The contractor must report to the school authorities as soon as possible.
Well, do you wanna say instead of as soon as possible? I mean, what does that mean? Can you say five, does that mean five minutes?
Five minutes before you know there's a problem?
No, I'm just saying, you should, when you say as soon as possible, I mean, maybe you wanna.
Meaningless. That's why we need some level of accountability.
No, great.
Because as soon as possible could mean as soon as I feel like picking up the phone and calling you twenty minutes later because I got my interrupted doing something else, right?
And again, that may piggyback into that if there's a time clause of what they need to perform. Right, flashing red lights, so. You know, again, routes will be developed in conjunction with the school department, um. Vendor is responsible for routing software, creating the routes. Uh. Yeah.
Can we say something about finding the most efficient routes?
I'll go back to that for a second.
Like, I'm not impressed with their, the software that we have now.
Well, I think what I was saying earlier is that like, we might wanna look into bringing on like a third party that can maybe analyze routes.
Okay, I'd be happy, I'd love to do that. Because you're saying the bus company is not in their best interest to say, oh, you only need fifteen buses.
They are. Yeah, they get incentive to provide less service for a lower price, right?
Right.
Yep.
So everyone's profiting from the contract.
This is taking us twenty minutes.
Not saying that that's what.
If we add a bus.
It's just.
We can do it in fifteen.
Right, right.
Yeah. So again, I'll read this um, paragraph to you. I'm gonna summarize the first one. Contractor has responsibility of preparing routes. Um, routes must be provided and approved by the uh, school department and the police department. Um, and then this one in particular says, router will conform to the school district policy for student time on vehicles will maximize student loading in order to minimize the number of buses and vans required. Each vehicle will carry the maximum number of students possible within the time available in order to minimize the number of vehicles and routes required to provide safe and efficient school transportation services. A bus seat will, shall be reserved for every eligible student. So again, that could be changed a million different ways. Uh, but it is saying that they will work with the school department to minimize the number of routes and the intent is to um, maximize the efficiency and minimize the number of vehicles as possible.
Okay.
Nicole, will you send this draft out, um, before, I assume this is on the December school committee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just gonna write it first.
Yeah, no worries.
There more about?
We can, we can send the draft out with like a little, um.
Highlights of what have changed.
Yeah, that's right. Bullet points of change would probably be helpful. Yeah, that's good.
Good, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I'm good.
You good?
Yep.
You good, Melissa?
Yeah, I'm good.
I don't think there was anybody other than B Cat listening. I don't know, I can ask B Cat if they're good, but. Um, all right, so, um, I guess we can adjourn the meeting. Oh, thank you.
Good. Yeah, thanks, everyone.
All right, take care.
Bye.